Good evening and welcome to the City of Hayward Planning Commission meeting for March 27, 2025. We're holding a hybrid meeting with some participants in the council chambers and others who have joined virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city's website. The meeting is now called to order at 7:03 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson?
Present.
Commissioner Goodbody? Absent. Commissioner Hammond?
Present.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Present.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Chair Hardy?
Present. We will now move to public comments on non-agenda items. The public comment section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner within established time limits and focused on issues which directly affect the city or are within the jurisdiction of the city. As the Commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not on the agenda, your items will be taken into consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a Commission meeting. The city is committed to orderly con-- the city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend Commission meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Ms. Allen, do we have any public comments at this time?
There are no public commenters at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, so I will close public comments. So our first action item tonight is the nomination and election of officers. This item was continued from the February 27 meeting because Commissioner Myers was not present to accept his nomination for the Office of Secretary. Commissioner Myers, do you accept the nomination?
I humbly do, thank you.
Great. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody? Absent. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers? Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. So motion passes and congratulations, Commissioner Myers. Our next action item is the first of two public hearings. For this agenda item, the decision of the Planning Commission is final unless appealed. The appeal period is 10 days from the date of the decision. If appealed, a public hearing will be scheduled before the City Council for final decision. Item number two, PH 25010, is a vesting tentative tract map, application number TM 240006, for a new multifamily residential subdivision with 27 three-story townhouse-style condominiums and a four-story 18-unit multifamily building on a vacant 1.14 acre site located at 21659 Mission Boulevard, for which a corresponding vesting tentative tract map, site plan review, and density bonus application was previously approved in September 2020, but for which the previously approved vesting tentative tract map has since expired. Does staff or the applicant have a presentation for this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, staff does have a presentation, and thanks for telling the audience at home the project description ended up was kind of a mouthful. This same subdivision which-- that's before you tonight, which originally included a site plan review and density bonus application, was approved by the Planning Commission back on September 10, 2020, but the vesting tentative tract map approval expired three years later because the project was sold in 2023 and the new owner, who is in the audience tonight, was unable to complete the final subdivision map approval process before the expiration date. The new owner was, however, able to submit building permit applications for the project before the site plan review and density bonus approvals expired. So all that is needed at this time is the reapproval of the vesting tentative tract map, which is essentially the layout of the subdivision. The project site is located at the north end of the city on the border with cherry land in unincorporated Alameda County. It is currently vacant except for 13 existing trees and some areas of failing pavement and has recently been subjected to illegal dumping. The lot has frontages along both Mission Boulevard and Montgomery Street and is zoned Mission Boulevard Corridor Neighborhood, 17.5 to 35 units per acre, and designated sustainable mixed use in the general plan. The site is bordered by existing single-family and multifamily dwellings to the west, northwest, and southwest along Montgomery Street, and a variety of commercial uses, most of which are auto-related, along Mission Boulevard. The proposed subdivision features one-- essentially one large lot containing all of the condominiums, which are airspace units, not physical land-based units, and the apartment building with two common areas, one containing the condominium parking lot and another containing the common open space, which includes a small playground along with a community lawn and garden, which all of the project's residents will be able to utilize. So this is both the owners of the condominiums and the tenants of the rental units in the apartment building. The condominiums will be housed in five separate buildings, all of which will share a single driveway and parking lot off of Montgomery Street, while the apartment building will be oriented towards and take access from Mission Boulevard. The subdivision design, this is-- this slide shows the layout of the subdivision. The design is nearly identical to the one that was approved by your predecessors, and I think Robert was actually maybe on that commission at the time, back in 2020, except that it now features a single lot with 27 airspace condominiums and the remainder consisting-- oh, and a-- and the 18-unit apartment building, and the remainder consisting of common open space. The original design featured a lot line separating the condominium portion of the project from the apartment building portion, and I'll show you guys, it's-- you can see this, I'm not sure if you guys can see it, there's a cross-hatched area here, and there was a lot line in the original design bisecting that area to separate the rental component of the project from the ownership component. However, during the review process for the subdivision's final construction plans, the site's water service provider, which in this case is East Bay Mud, not the city's water, not our water, but they'll be taking water from East Bay Mud, informed the city that the utility plans did not meet its standards because they showed a proposed-- a new water line crossing that property line, and that's something that East Bay Mud unfortunately does not allow. So the applicant had to go back to the drawing board, and while they were addressing that issue, that's when the map expired unfortunately, so. The proposed subdivision conforms to various general plan goals and policies pertaining to new residential developments, including those listed here. I don't need to read each one, they're also in your staff reports. And as stated earlier, the proposed subdivision is nearly identical to the one that was approved by the Commission back in September 2020. Even with the loan change removing the lot line that would have separated the condominium portion from the apartment portion, staff still believes the Commission can make-- can again make the required findings to approve the vesting tentative map tonight. The current plans incorporate all the amenities featured in the original plans and do not propose any changes to the density, parking count, or overall size, height, or layout of any of the buildings in the project. As such, they would not pose any new adverse impacts on the adjoining uses in the surrounding neighborhood. And for the-- for these reasons, and due to the project's consistency with the general plan, staff is recommending that the Commission reapprove the vesting tentative tract map based on the draft findings in Attachment 2 to your staff reports and subject to the recommended conditions contained in Attachment 3. That concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
I don't believe they have a presentation, but they're prepared to answer any questions the Commission asks tonight.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll open it up for Commissioner questions. This is the time for the Commissioners to ask clarifying questions of staff or the applicant, and we'll reserve our comments for later. So do any Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Lowe?
Thank you, I just have-- I think I just have one, and that is, I wanted to see if the-- I noticed in the materials it talked about the trees and that there was no real environmental impact, but there potentially could be if there are migrating birds or nesting birds or whatever in the trees, and I was wondering if that was included in the site plan review, or should it be included in the conditions of approval?
It should definitely be, so that's actually a standard requirement when you're removing trees from a site, but if it's-- I don't see it in this subdivision, in the conditions of approval for the subdivision map, so I'll check to see if it's in the conditions of approval from-- for the site plan review and the density bonus, but it needs to be if it's not, so, thanks for pointing that out.
That's all I had.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes. According to the Planning Commission meeting on 9/20-- 9/10/20, the original size of the property is stated at 1.12 acres, and the updated size of the property now is at 1.14 acres. Is there any reason for the discrepancy?
I can't explain it, sir. It was probably just an oversight, just a-- yeah. Sorry, sorry about that.
And my other question follows Commissioner Lowe's question about the lack of tree and landscaping schedules, and I guess a question, does the current tree and landscaping schedule follow our current tree ordinance?
Yeah, so the landscape plans were already approved as part of the site plan review entitlement process, so I think we-- I think they were attached to your staff report for reference only, I'm not sure if the landscape plans made it in there, but we definitely wanted to show you what the buildings were going to look like. But those are-- those are already memorialized, and we made sure back in 2020 that they complied with the standards that were in effect at the time.
Was there any final report on any endangered wildlife nesting sites?
So, what Commissioner Lowe was referring to a moment ago was a requirement, it's a standard requirement when you're moving-- removing trees from a site that a-- like an avi-- a bird expert has to go out and look at the trees and make sure there's no active nests in any of those trees before the guys bring out the chainsaws and start, you know, chopping the trees down. So that's something that will be-- if it's not already tacked on to the conditions for the site plan review application from 2020, we'll make sure that it gets in here in this list.
And my last question, just--
They have to actually do it like no more than 14 days before they start bringing the equipment out there to remove the trees, because 14 days is enough time for apparently for a nesting bird to set up shop in a tree.
Okay, thank you. And then when it-- the-- when this was approved back in 2020, the team, the Planning Commission had some concerns about colors and some other architectural details, were any of those addressed in this new radiation?
So we-- the applicants were not required to show us their-- any revised architectural plans for this application before you tonight. Whatever made it into the conditions of approval for the site plan review from back in 2020, they will be required to satisfy those conditions.
Okay.
So there was a condition about providing artwork on the facade of the apartment building facing Mission Boulevard, they will be required to satisfy that.
I saw that in the report. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. So I understand that originally we had two separate properties, and we're eliminating that dividing?
No, so there-- it's always been one big lot, but back in 2020, they were-- their predecessors were proposing to split that big lot into two smaller lots. The same amount of land, but two smaller lots instead of one large lot. They can't do that split anymore because there are water lines that have to go--
Right.
--between the townhomes and the apartment building. I believe, and the engineer can probably speak to this, I think all the water service has to come off of Montgomery Street, so even for the apartment building, they can't draw water from the Mission Boulevard mains for some-- for some reason that he probably knows better than I, and so--
Okay, good, I read that. And I'm curious, with us not subdividing, in the future, if there was a chance for somebody to buy the apartment building, how does that affect what would have been two property lots versus now that it's one lot attached with the townhome property?
That's a question I probably am not able to address on the spot. It might still be feasible to subdivide that, but they'd have to resolve the water issue-- the issue with the water line, because East Bay Mud won't allow that lot line to go between the apartments and the townhomes as long as one of its new water pipes will cross that property line. It might still be feasible someday, but the only thing that worries me is that if there's a new property line in between the apartments and the townhomes, they might-- those buildings might have to be-- their fire ratings might have to be increased depending on how close they are to that new property line, because it's going to be two separate owners now, two separate insurance policies, right, instead of one owner, and so, yeah, that's why I said I'm not sure if I could answer that question.
Yeah, that was one of the first things I saw as a potential conflict in the future when we had the two--
There's building codes that would kick in if you tried to put that property line back in between the apartments and the townhomes, and I'm not a building-- that's not my area that's--
Okay. And then maybe tagging on to Commissioner Lowe's question about the birds again, do we use a third-party bird expert for that, or is that a staff member?
No, they actually can-- the developers are able to go out and hire their own-- they have to be a qualified, you know, wildlife biologist that's licensed by the state of California, but they-- we don't require them to utilize the city's, you know, consultant wildlife biologist.
Okay, great. And then I think my last reference, I do understand we have our own Mission Boulevard and even close to transit station parking limitations or requirements, but I see we have 27 townhomes with 24 parking spaces, so there's a deficit of three if we only have one working driving person in the house. And then we also have 18 apartments with 11 spaces, and that's just assuming, and I know we have these rules in place. I'm just curious, what do we have for overflow for the, I would almost say guaranteed extra cars we're going to have? And then for guests, what do we have in place?
So what you're seeing in this case is what we're getting. I went to visit the site and I parked along Montgomery Street on the backside, and this was around 5 o'clock on my way home from work one day, and it was pretty, you know, it's crowded. There's places to park, but it's-- there's a lot of cars out there. The residents who already live along Montgomery Street, there's an apartment complex right across the street that's gated, I believe, they probably have some extra cars, those residents, so I mean, it's-- we-- the Mission Boulevard code was pretty revolutionary when it-- it didn't place-- it didn't set any minimum parking requirements for new projects along the Boulevard. And the rationale for that was that there's robust AC transit bus service, and there is, and there's a BART station, you know, I don't really think it's walkable from this site, it's probably, I mean, it's a long walk, if you're an avid walker, you could do it, but I think the thought was that there's going to be more and more increased bus service with greater frequencies coming, and then hopefully people will-- who-- people who choose to live in these types of developments probably will not have to-- they'll realize what they're moving into, and they'll realize, okay, if I have two cars, I'm going to be battling with the other neighbors on the street for that, you know, for our second car, so I don't have a great answer for you, Commissioner, but that's my--
Okay, no, and I get that, and I get the Mission Boulevard zoning codes that we have, and it's my only level of trepidation on this whole project right now. It's not really against the project, it's against kind of our--
Yeah.
--towards our zoning rules that we have right now, and I do see that--
Can we save comments for the comment section?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
That was a question, but, okay, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson?
I think I'll wait for the comments, right?
If you have a clarifying question, you ask it now, if it's just a comment, then we wait for the comments, because we want to hear the public first before we start saying what our decision may be. Okay. Are there any other Commissioner questions? If not, I have just one question, so it's a follow-up to the question that was submitted ahead of time about the reach code, so I just want more clarification, just because I didn't see, even though there was a different version of it previously, and it sounded like some green building standards, but I didn't see it living anywhere in what we received, just--
So, so there's a city's reach code, and then there's what's called CAL Green, which is the statewide green building code, and the green building code is updated every three years. All building codes, there's a three-year cycle, and they keep getting stricter and stricter, and so in 2022, they locked in their-- they got their building permit applications in in 20-- they didn't do it to try to like, you know, cut any quarter, but they just got in in the last cycle, green building permit, green building code cycle, and back then, the reach code that was in effect didn't have that new requirement to go-- for buildings to go all-electric. I think everything else was largely the same, they will have to do rooftop solar on the townhome, on the condominiums and on the apartment building, and they will have to put an electric vehicle charging infrastructure. But by the time-- yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, my question was, so did I miss that? Because I really looked through the document, I didn't see it in the conditions for approval.
I forgot to answer that part of your question. So the city's not going to place a condition on a project that says, "The project shall comply with the California Green Building Code." That goes without saying, you can't build anything in California without complying with that. So that's-- that's conditions not even in-- it's probably not even in the site plan review conditions from 2020.
Great, thank you. If there are no other Commissioner questions, we will close that and go to public comments. So I have two speaker cards for in-person comments from Sophie Nguyen and Brian Dorard. So Sophie, if you would like to come first, and you'll have three minutes each.
So Sophie and Brian are-- she's the developer, she represents the developer, okay, I wasn't sure if you were-- I thought you thought maybe they were members of the public.
Well, technically, or-- because they're in the public comment section, so even though that's who she is, isn't it still a public comment?
Sometimes the developer will-- if the developer wants to do a presentation, they'll be afforded more time, but I-- so I-- never mind, ignore me, ignore me.
Thank you, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sophie Nguyen, I'm a representative of the owner. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have. For the technical reason, Brian is our civil engineer, is we'll be here to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you. I think we just asked all of the questions that we had, we didn't have any that were really for you, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning Commissioners, yes, thank you for the opportunity for us to bring this project back to you for your review. We were the civil engineers with the tentative map back in 2020, and we've continued to work on it. You know, we submitted the plans at the end of the year 2022 for building permit, we got our comments, first round of comments didn't come until later that summer in 2023, they didn't really come across my desk until October of 2023. We had some comments that we were dealing with, one of them was from the fire department with the-- with the water for the fire service for the project. During the tentative map, we had initially proposed dual water meters, which where each of the condominiums will have their own separate water service and fire service. You know, we talked to East Bay Mud during the tentative map, and we were kind of aware that bringing the water off of Montgomery was a potential issue, but they kind of assured us that they would-- that they would be able to provide service. You know, once we submitted the plans and we got comments and we actually got a fire speaker designer onboard, we realized that we weren't able to actually bring the fire services for the townhomes from Montgomery, that we actually had to bring them from Mission Boulevard. Our project's kind of interesting because it's right at the project border between Oak-- between the City of Hayward and Alameda County, and also, there's two water lines in Montgomery, one's East Bay Mud, the other one is City of Hayward, and they're both dead-end lines, so it's not a loop system, which are never very good systems. So we had to switch the fire services for the townhomes to Montgomery, and that's why we're bringing the fire service from Montgomery past the apartment building. East Bay Mud does not allow private fire services or fire lines to cross the property line, and that's why we had to get rid of the property line, so I'm here if you have any other questions you'd like me to address, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, do we have any other public comments online?
Yes, we have one public commenter.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Rose, or Ro, I usually go by Ro, but this computer insists on putting Rose. Anyway, Ro Agalor, and I want to say that I really wish we would do more of this sustainable mixed-use zoning. Glad to see this infill-type zoning provides, you know, diversity of housing types, which could serve a spectrum of the community. What would be even better, one step higher, five stories, is if this development had been required to build inclusionary affordable housing that would help the city reach its low-income housing RENA goals and its strategic plan goals. So the townhouses for ownership probably, and the apartments for rental, but I didn't see any inclusionary housing where the income was designated, the housing cost was designated for low income or very low income. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, we'll now close public comments, and we will move on to Commissioner comments. So are there any comments that Commissioners would like to make? Okay, and Commissioner Meyer, sorry. Commissioner Stevens, go first.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve this vesting tentative tract map, TM 24006, and I just have one comment to make. The letter that came in this evening from the California Housing Defense Fund, I find extremely annoying that they want to remind us of state law and our obligation to apply with this. I just want to remind everybody that cares about local controls over development, the state has taken away any ability for the City of Hayward to direct its development, and I would encourage anybody that cares about this to learn more about it and to vote out the state senators and assembly people that represent us. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Do we have any other comments? Or-- Commissioner?
Thank you so much. Again, I think I've mentioned this last year when we talk about parking. I've seen how, I think it was unbundling parking hasn't been-- parking. I I I've seen how I think it was unbundling parking hasn't been a disaster in Long Beach in Sacramento. And somebody was shot in my son's structure in Sacramento over a parking spot. I wonder if we don't have enough parking, who is going to maintain the towing service? Who's going to do some oversight to make sure people that do have parking, they can have access to it? But secondly, like, we assume that some people with, you know, that work for tech companies, or they're single people moving into these places, and we're trying to house people from Hayward, is that a lot of people in Hayward drive, they also have kids. And I've said this over and over as a parent. It's nothing worse than not having a parking spot when you're coming home after picking your kids up after work, and you've got a bunch of stuff in your hand. So to hear there's a deficit and there's not spots available, it must be a privilege to think with that approach. A lot of families do need parking, and there is no guest parking, which can cause different issues that are not equitable and could create legal issues amongst people that live in these places. So I know that, sure, we'll we'll rubber stamp and we'll move forward. But I must say that it's very disappointing when we say, oh, well, there's just a deficit. When we're talking about housing people at one of the most critical times in our lives, making sure that they have a place to park their car. I don't know how many of you took the bus here today. Raise your hand. My point exactly. Not everyone, if you look at ridership, it hasn't gone up. Like, there's a lot of things that you look when we make decisions like this. So my comments is do better, is that we have to think about people that live here and their parking. It does matter. And I know this creative idea that everyone's get on transit. But what happens when they go on strike? What happens when we don't have those services that are available? I think we have to think long game, and we have to think about what could happen when we make decisions about approving projects.
Thank you. Are there other Commissioner comments? I just wanted to make the comment that, on the one hand, I agree with what Commissioner Franco Clausen just said about parking being an issue. We've had a lot of discussions around that. And I know it won't stop this from moving forward. But when something says it's family, it's it's geared toward families, it's a little bit hard to to accept that when there's not going to be any parking. I did want to say, though, that I do really, really appreciate that this is a mixed use development, and that there's both apartments that will be for rent and townhomes for people to purchase. I feel like that's really important because we haven't seen a lot of apartments being built. So I just really wanted to appreciate the applicant for that. And I'm happy to see that. And we do have a motion on the floor that has been seconded, and I believe we should take a vote.
In case the Commission was was wondering, Ms. Aguilar's comment about there should be some affordable units in the project, there are actually going to be four affordable units, and three of them will be ownership units, which is pretty unusual. And then one of the rental units in the apartment building will also be affordable. So I wasn't sure. I was looking at you guys to see if any of you had puzzled looks on your faces. I think you probably picked up on that.
I didn't want to respond to her because I don't know if we're supposed to respond to the commenters.
It's always okay.
I do know that.
Ro is a regular commenter in these public hearings, so.
There actually isn't just a low income one, though. There is very low income. And the so there's yes.
That's right.
You did see it.
I just wanted to get that in the record before we close.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Goodbody absent. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. So the motion passes. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, staff. Okay, we will move on to our next action item, which is our second public hearing of the evening. For this agenda item, the Planning Commission may make a recommendation to the City Council. Item number three, PH 25012, is the General Plan Amendment to the hazards element of the Hayward 2040 general plan to incorporate a reference to the Hayward Local Resilience Plan. Does staff have a presentation for this item?
Good evening. This is Ryan Hamery with the Hayward Fire Department. We do have a presentation.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I thought they were going to pull this. There it is. Go ahead and go to the next slide. All right. So quick summary. We're looking or review and recommend a minor amendment to the hazards element of the general plan. The goal is to incorporate a footnote referencing the Hayward's 2021 Local Resilience Plan to align with Assembly Bill 2140 requirements. Next slide. Just for some background, 2021 Local Resilience Plan serves as a five year update to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. The update to the LRP was adopted in 2023. Goals prepared under the U.S. Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. This ensures compliance with state and federal disaster planning mandates. Next slide. The main goal in the importance of the amendment is to maintain Hayward's eligibility for state reimbursement under the California Disaster Assistance Act. This supports ongoing local resilience and disaster repairness efforts, and strengthens the alignment with AB 2140 to maximize our post disaster eligibility for financial aid. And next slide. There also was a review of the environmental impact of the change, conducted in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. No substantial changes to the 2023 Environmental Impact Report addendum are recommended. There's no new information requiring for further environmental analysis. The minor amendment adding reference to the LRP does not result in environmental impacts. Next slide. So we're asking is the Planning Commission to deliberate and make a recommendation to council. We have a city council public hearing and adoption is tentatively scheduled for April 22, 2025, and submission of an amended hazard element and associated resolution to the California Office of Emergency Services after adoption. And then the the final go go ahead to the next slide. Just to reiterate on the general plan amendment, the hazard, it's just a footnote referencing linking the two documents together. Is there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. So we'll open it up for any Commissioner questions. Commissioner Hammond?
Hello. From my own knowledge, on the staff report attachment one, page two, it shows that in 2010, 2016, 2016, the local hazard mitigation plan shows that Hayward is being included in the association of Bay Area governments. Yet in the 2021 version, the LHMP was renamed the Hayward Local Resilience Plan. Does that mean that the Hayward that Hayward now stands alone and is no longer part of the greater region?
I do not believe that was a change. I think it's just left out of the staff report.
That that would not know. We're still a member of ABA.
Okay. And can you please give me an example or examples of an eligible public assistance project?
Can't even a specific example right now. But main thing is it kind of breaks off into two parts. There's the hazard mitigation. So something we would be doing to prevent and build resiliency in the community prior to a disaster. Right now, I think it's something to focus. We're working a lot on is building resiliency through wildland preparation and vegetation management and resiliency to homes up in the hills.
So have the priorities changed since the previous approval? And what now is considered Hayward's top priority?
For me, we're looking at all the hazards in the local resilience plan. According to FEMA, how we rate for our hazards that are represented in the East Bay, we are a high hazard for earthquake and for wildfire. So those would be our top two priorities. But we're not limited to that. And just in the in the hazard plan, there's not a there's not a significant change to what we're trying to do. But the projects, you know, obviously, we're working harder based on the expanding hazard in California for wildland.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Are there any other Commissioner questions?
Thank you. So if I understand correctly, the only modifications to the plan are shown in red text in the document. Is that correct? In attachment three?
Yeah, it's the red text on page three, 136. And then just above it, you can see where the footnote is. That's that's the only change.
I guess the question I have is, when we look at goal five, urban wildfire hazards, I mean, it seems like based on what happened in Los Angeles earlier this year, I mean, shouldn't we be having more concrete plans here, especially related to, I saw one here was really, really interesting. I didn't know it even existed, about evacuation during wildfires. Like, I mean, I guess the question comes in is these are all these policies are nice to have. But if we don't do anything with them, they're sort of pointless, right?
Yeah, I'd say that there's two objectives we're looking at right now. One is to make sure we are eligible for funding post and pre disaster, which is the main point of adding the footnote to a document that's already, you know, already was adopted in 2023. I can say right now, a large part of my job is looking at and developing more community resilience to wildfire. And we are very active in that front right now to expand our services to the community.
So one of them could be, is is one of these, is the inaction of one of these policies, the local chipping program that that you sponsor?
Yeah, right now, we're it's it's that season. So we're gearing up for the vegetation management plan, looking at projects and grants to reduce the threat to neighborhoods, as well as the state of California is kind of making a big push right now. There's new LRA hazard maps, and they are looking at ways to build resiliency through the actual neighborhoods and home hardening projects. So we're working to see what we can do to support, you know, our customers and make sure that we can ease the burden of developing a more resilient homes in the neighborhoods.
So how how would those that like live on the urban wildfire or urban land fire wildfire risk, how would they learn more about how to get information and how the city could help sort of fund some of these things?
Right now, I'd say just continuing to go to the City of Hayward website, and we have a defensible space and home hardening section. Also, the state of California is rapidly expanding theirs. There's a lot of information. And we're actually, right now, with the state hazard maps, we're reaching out and doing a mailing to the community for everyone that's in those high hazard areas to advise them of the new maps and what those resources are.
So so just so I understand correctly, so this this is amended, and this document's very important because it allows the city to acquire funding from state resources. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. So the in a the main thing is that in a disaster, there's a local, the feds will cover about 25 or sorry, 75% leaving 25% of the recovery cost to the community. That California, if you.
Post disaster, post.
Post disaster, yep.
Okay, so.
We're looking for eligibility for both.
Okay, so like, so like a preemptive approach could be like, so the primary egress route from the hills would be Hayward Boulevard, if I understand correctly. So would would a potential funding source like, like, I mean, I'm very interested. I've asked this question to Public Works is like, what is the emergency evacuation route for Hayward Boulevard? Like, do we have a plan? And if we don't have a plan, could we develop a plan? And if the road needed modifications, would that be a potential grant application?
It would be a potential as we look for the whole evacuation plan. I would say there's a few evacuation routes out of the Hayward Hills, not just Hayward Boulevard. We currently, along with the rest of the county, use Genesis for evacuation modeling and to notifications to our residents.
This this is really, really interesting and something that I'm very interested in because nobody's been able to answer these basic questions for me. So I guess my question, I it's not a question, it's just an open statement. I'm totally in support of this. I think it's great.
Could we hold?
Yeah.
The statement. It's okay. Thank you. Are there any other Commissioner questions? Okay, if not, we will move on to public comments. Ms. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public commenters at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. So now we will move on to Commissioner comments. So Commissioner Stevens, would you like to complete that thought?
I I apologize. I sincerely apologize to everybody that's listening, as well as the rest of the Commission, the chair and our guest here. So I guess the only question I have is that or not question, comment I have is that, you know, in the last month or so, I've been made aware of several challenges along Hayward Boulevard. And I've asked some questions, and I've yet to see an answer. And I guess this policy is a great policy. But policies, again, only have meaning when there's actually a plan, and it's funded, and there's an understanding of how to do it. And I feel that like, there is none, or I don't know what it is. And I'm not sure my neighbors know what it is. And, you know, LA made me very aware of, you know, the dangers that, you know, all of everybody that lives up in the hills faces, right? And it's not just the hills, it's the flatlands, too. So I just I find it frustrating that we create policies that go into books, but nobody ever follows them. And I think we should make the language very simple and easy to understand. I don't like the term resiliency because I think it's a funny word for something that's really, really meaningful. So I wish we, as a society, would just get more real about these things and do a little more plain talk. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Are there any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lo?
So I agree with Commissioner Stevens. It is very important that the community is aware of what the safety plans are and what the expectations of the community are. I was surprised to hear that there are multiple exit routes out of the hills. I only know of two. So if there are more, I'd love to hear about them. But also, again, I know we've I've read in the materials, not only today, but in the past, that the city really wants to reach out to the community and make sure the community know knows what the city is doing. And this is probably the most important area where the city, the residents really need to be contacted, and they need to know what's going on as it relates to hazards and public safety. So thank you for your efforts to the staff. I do think we need a little bit more outreach in the community as far as that is concerned. However, at this time, I think the question remains, should we recommend the general plan amendment to the hazard element of the Hayward 2040 general plan to incorporate the reference to the Hayward Local Resilience Plan? And I say yes. And I move that we recommend that to City Council.
Second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Lo and a second from Commissioner Stevens. Ms. Allen, could we please take a vote?
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody absent. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. Motion passes. So our next item is the approval of the planning planning commission meeting minutes from March 28.
So moved.
Wait, wrong one. Sorry, wrong. I set the wrong date. It's the minutes of the meeting from February 27, 2025.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. So we have a motion from Commissioner Franco Clausen, second from. Great, so we have a motion from Commissioner Franco Clausen, second from Commissioner Lo. Ms. Allen, can you please call roll?
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody, absent. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Abstain.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. Motion passes, and we will move on to our commission reports. These are oral reports on planning and zoning matters and commissioners' announcements or referrals. So you have something, great. Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Thank you. I don't know if it was you, Jeremy, or someone in the department, but from our last meeting, I wanted you to know that I actually appreciate that somebody listens to us, or they go back and follow the notes. I had this incredible team yesterday that came and responded to my request to cut the trees and the power lines. And it was, to me, it was really important. My neighbors, who have no idea what's happening in the community, were so grateful when we're talking about fires and we're talking about, you know, things that obstructed and things that are not necessary, things we can prevent. It was really nice to have this, this young, two young men of color come in, and were just so kind and actually cut the trees, probably the best I've ever seen it, out of the complete lines. So I just want to say, I appreciate this team working with our, I think it's our adverse division, to get that done. I just, just wanted to say that they actually came and did it, just from our last meeting. So that really means a lot to me, so thank you.
Thank you, are there any other commissioner reports?
I just wanted to say that Commissioner Hammond and I attended the Planning Commissioners Academy from March 5th through 7th, and it was an amazing event. And I'm so grateful that we got to go, and it was just really great to learn a lot, to meet planning commissioners from other cities, and to just really, to hear the latest on what's going on, laws that are coming and everything. So it was such a great opportunity, and I'm so thankful that that was something that we got to do.
I second that.
Great, are there any?
Only comment that I would have is that we have one item on the next agenda, which is April 10th. It is a routine item that frequently comes every year to the commission. It is the annual CIP project list, and so we'll be bringing that. And that will be from, cover the span from fiscal year '26 to fiscal year 2035. So it's kind of a long term. And it gets updated every year to add new projects, or once projects are completed, they come off the list. But it will be coming, that's the only thing that we have right now scheduled for that agenda, and our Public Works team will be making that presentation.
I wanted to see that presentation. I won't be here for that, I will be traveling for work. And unfortunately, where I'm staying can't have public access, or I would be able to do it there, but I won't be at that next meeting.
Thank you. All right, well, our next meeting is scheduled for April 10th. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at 7:56 PM.
Recording stopped.